Good evening. Will you all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocabulary, V-O-C-A-B-U-L-A-R-Y, vocabulary. Vocabulary is one of the primary reasons why we have things like a spelling contest, because words are your friends, knowledge is power. The ability to have a good vocabulary will serve you throughout your life. And so, we have things like competitions like the Spelling Bee. How many of you are here for the Spelling Bee because your honorees are the Spelling Bee? I see. Well, Dr. Chase would now like to honor you for your participation in the Spelling Bee. Dr. Chase?
We would like to call Miriam, first of all, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We would like to call Miriam Bernaby as well, because Miriam Bernaby coordinated the Spelling Bee and actually she's been coordinating the Spelling Bee for the past two years. And so, it would be very fitting to have you stand here to help celebrate and honor these beautiful children who came out this evening. The wonderful thing about our school district is that we're always celebrating children. We celebrate athletics, we celebrate the arts, and tonight we get to celebrate the academics. And so, it is with great pleasure that our Board President, Mr. David Warner, Ms. Miriam Bernaby, our Director for Art, Music, and Special Programs, and I present to you our 2017 Spelling Bee participants. This is our fifth year participating in the Scripps National Spelling Bee, as well as the District Spelling Bee, and I have to tell you, it was quite an impressive group. Each year, it's more and more impressive. And what we are planning to do with the blessing of our school board is for next year to open up the Highview Competition for the larger Scripps National Spelling Bee Competition. So if students who feel that they can compete for the title of the Scripps National Spelling Bee Champion, and they feel that they can handle it, will give you the opportunity to not only participate in the Highview Competition, but also in the 4th through 8th Competition. And we're doing that because what we're noticing is that more and more each year with the Scripps National Spelling Bee, the participants are younger and younger. I believe there are kindergartners who are in the competition this year, as well as last year and previous years. And so, we want to open it up to our younger students as well. So without any further delay, Miriam, would you like to say something about the Spelling Bee?
Sure. The Spelling Bee was a wonderful experience, and I would be remiss if I did not recognize our coordinators who are here tonight, Ms. Joy Alter from the Middle School, and Mr. Michael McHale from Highview, and Ms. Anne Marie Chevlin back there from RJ Bailey. And they work very hard. There are a lot of moving pieces in this production. So thank you, guys.
Would the entire Board of Education come out here in front of the table so that we can all read the spellings?
And also too, we thank the principals and all the school administrators who prepared the students and all the teachers who aren't here but might be watching to prepare the students for this wonderful experience. And also to you parents, I know that you were spelling the words along with your children, and hopefully that we're using some of those words at home to enhance the vocabulary. We'd like to call Mr. Gary Mastriangelo up, Principal of Highview Elementary School, to present to the school board, as well as to the community, our 2017 Spelling Bee participants for grades 2 through 3.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Boys and girls, you did an amazing job. I hope all of you are here, and if you're not, I will hold on to your certificate and bring it back to school tomorrow. These are, I believe, in alphabetical order. And the font is large enough that I do not need my glasses, which is good. So if I call your name and you are here, please come to the podium. If your name is Ann Alfie. Ann, are you here? No? Okay. Sure. Sofia Campos, please come on up. I know Sofia is here, I saw her. Congratulations, Sofia. Wait right up here with us, okay? Helen Chen. Logan Constant. Brent Davenport. Joshua Edward. Congratulations, Josh. Louis Espinol. Melanie Fajardo. Congratulations, Melanie. Elizabeth Fleming. Shanaya Florador. Jaylen Hall. Sofia Enriquez. Kevin Husey. Samantha George. Congratulations, Samantha. Kendall Mangum. Congratulations. Virchini Mohan. Congratulations. Siddarth Nair. Congratulations to them. Eric Pugh. Sawyer Pineda. Avery Powell. Congratulations. Phalen Reyes McCray. Leo Romero. Donovan Russell. Joseph Salhab. Rachel Udobi. Elijah Van Der Swaai. Congratulations, Elijah. Julia Yu. Congratulations. These are most of our 28 participants from Highview School.
And as Julia is shaking hands and taking her position, I do want to add that Sawyer Pineda came in third place for the Highview category. Shanaya Florador came in second place. And Julia Yu, who's over there, came in first place.
Ready? One, two, three, cheese. Click, 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 click. You good? Yep, good. That's our Greenberg.
So in the 4th through 8th category, we have the opportunity to send our first-place winner to the Scripps National Spelling Bee to represent our school district on the national stage. And I should say international stage, because approximately 275 students from around the world get to participate in this particular spelling competition. It's one of the longest-running academic competitions out there. And I'm so happy that once again, we're afforded the opportunity to participate. I would be remiss if I did not mention the Theodore Young Community Center, who are partners in this. And had it not been for the support of the Town of Greenberg, Paul Finer, Commissioner Andre Early, this would not be possible for our school district. And so, we're very proud, once again, to participate. We're going to call the students up, but I have to acknowledge Ms. Harshita Shet, who will be representing the Greenberg Central School District, once again, for the fourth time in a row. Ms. Harshita, please stand. I don't know if any of you noticed this who were at the 4th through 8th round. I have to just admit that kids were just wonderful. The Highview students at the 4th through 8th round, I love how the children celebrated one another. They high-fived each other, they were so happy for each other. You know, if you spelled a word right, they were just cheering each other along. And it really speaks volumes to the children that we have and parents. Thank you for instilling that in our kids. I mean, it's really amazing to watch. So I'm going to call Ms. Kiana Washington, Principal of Bailey Elementary School, as well as Ms. Ashley Jackson, Assistant Principal. Mr. Smith, would you like to come up also? It's principal because you're going to DC. You might as well enjoy this. Because Harshita will be representing Woodlands Middle High School. So the three of you can share the microphone to call the students up, because they're categorized by 4th through 8th.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Well, I would like to call Jordan Alexander, is she here? From RJ Bailey, and her twin brother Logan Alexander. So I just wanted to say their names. Is Brianna Barnes here tonight? Thank you.
Quincy Buttercharity, thank you. Quincy, is Quincy here? Zuriel Buchanan. Bridget Carrie. Kai Cinco.
RJ Bailey again, Madison Clark, are you here, Madison Clark?
Lydia Evans.
Eric Foss, RJ Bailey Elementary School. Emma Hoffman.
Trevi Holland.
And the third-place winner, sixth grader, and he is Victor Ikmanude. If you can come all at his first time participating in the Spelling Bee, I'm so proud of him, third place. He has two more years, seventh and eighth grade, so keep studying. Excellent job, Victor.
Sydney Jackson.
Is Nico Valen here? Denise Manuel? Christina McKinney, come on down. Excellent job. Amaya Meme, are you here? Come on down. Congratulations. Jeremy Morton, come on down. Congratulations. Joseph Nasserino, are you here? Spencer Ornsby, come on down, Spencer, are you here?
Ann Penose. Harshita Shet. Brooke Taylor. Sarah Yee.
Okay, I also would like to acknowledge Jeremy Morton. Jeremy will be the student who will represent the Greenberg Central School District at the Geography Bee. I think he started something new in our school district, and it's going to balloon into something fabulous.
I just want to tell everyone, Jeremy Morton came to me, and he asked me if we could register for the Geography Bee. He initiated this at RJ Bailey. He will be going to the Middle School, so we hope the tradition will keep going. But thank you, Jeremy, for even bringing it to my attention. I appreciate that.
Okay, so 4th through 8th category students, please take a picture with the school board. Oh, so the Middle School and Bailey. Coordinators, please join. And from Scripps, the people who bring us the Spelling Bee, in addition to giving a trip to our winner, Harshita Shet, to Washington DC, they also provide the Samuel Lewis Sugarman Award. And this award is presented to you by Mr. J. Sugarman in honor of his father, Samuel Lewis Sugarman, who revered academic achievements. So congratulations on that. But that's not all. In addition, you get one-year subscription of the Merriam-Webster Unabridged Online Dictionary. And not only that, you get one year of Britannica Online as well. So congratulations. So in closing, again, congratulations to all of our participants, and thank you all, school board, for continuing to support this awesome experience for our children. And we hope that you all will participate again next year. And to all the coordinators and administrators, Miriam Bernaby did such a great job this year at coordinating the Spelling Bee. And she kept telling me how stressful it was, but at the end of it all, it was so worth it. As many of you know, Miriam will be retiring in June. And so, we just want to say thank you so much, Miriam. Thanks for all that you do. And thank you for coordinating my baby, the Spelling Bee. Thank you very much. Ah, thank you, you can make me cry, I'm going to sit down. Thank you. And while I have your attention, as you know, the Board approved last year a resolution making every Spelling Bee Day William H. Carter Day. And we have a couple of students who received the William H. Carter Award. As many of you know, it was Bill Carter who helped launch the Spelling Bee originally five years ago. And unfortunately, he is no longer with us physically, but the Spelling Bee is still his baby. And so, we just thank the Theodore Young Center so much. I have to acknowledge some of our judges, because they were watching tonight and they wanted to be here. And I just want to thank them on behalf of our school board and our school district. Ms. Lena Anderson, President of the NAACP Greenberg White Plains Branch. Judith Beville, Greenberg Town Clerk. The Honorable Dolores Brathwaite, Greenberg Town Justice. Paul Finer, Greenberg Town Supervisor. Janice Kirchner of the JCC, Senior Director. She works with our SMART program that is newly installed at Leif Jackson Elementary School. Tim Lewis, Town Attorney. The Honorable Walter Rivera, Greenberg Town Justice. Chief Howard Reese, Fairview Fire Department Chief. Chief Edward Rush, Hartsdale Fire Department. Captain Brian Ryan, Greenberg Police Department. Izette Swazi Lipton, Board Chair of the Theodore D. Young Community Center. Ray Thomas, who is the Executive Director of the Exposure After School Program. And Frank Williams, who is the Executive Director of the White Plains Youth Bureau. We also had Huggers, Edith Bligh Jenkins, retired principal and community member, as well as Mona Freitag and Bradley, co-presidents of the Poets' Corner. We thank those people for coming out, giving us their time. Every year that we ask them to come out, they never hesitate to say yes. So we thank them so much, and thank them for that partnership. Good night.
It is anticipated that the Board of Education will adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons being considered for Board action this evening. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Those opposed? We're in closed session. We'll see you in about an hour. All right, let's get started. The next order of business is to hear statements from the public. Our first speakers are Kay Jackson and it looks like Dame Yaizar. And let's get a nice close-up of that son.
Good evening. I'm Kay Jackson, co-chair of the Seventh Annual Greenberg Taste Off, and this is OJ Yaizar, our Penny Social and Silent Auction chair. With us are other members of the Falcons' Nest Booster Club and alumni supporters. Thank you for coming out this evening. By the way, did you hear me say Seventh Annual Greenberg Taste Off? The Greenberg Taste Off is a collaborative event... The Greenberg Taste Off is a collaborative event between the Falcons' Nest Booster Club and the Woodlands Middle and High School PTSAs to support our students. Thanks to you all, we had 650 attendees at the Sixth Annual Greenberg Taste Off last year, and netted $11,500. Help us exceed last year's success by spreading the word. Over the years, this event has funded at least $8,000 towards the annual budgets of the Middle School and High School PTSAs, awarded more than $10,000 in student-athlete scholarships, co-sponsored the annual athletic awards night, and given more than $4,000 to local nonprofits. We take pride in the fact that with your support of the Taste Off last year, we were also able to partner with our school district and others to have motivational speaker, Inky Johnson, captivate our high school students and the greater community. If you missed the Inky Johnson presentation, watch it online via GSCD TV or on Verizon Channel 33 or Cablevision Channel 77. Sponsorships are available, which include advertisements in the Taste Off program and on our website. To date, this year's $500 player sponsors are Doug Schwartz &amp; Family, Party Line Tent Rentals, Royal Coach Lines, Theodore D. Young Community Center, and Mohawk Day Camp. Our $250 fan sponsors are AFC Urgent Care, High Tech Cleaners, Janmar Trophy, David &amp; Kay Jackson, Mark &amp; Rosalie Jackson, Haygood, Massey Family, and Dr. Keith O. &amp; Barbara Roper. You too can become a sponsor either individually, as a group, or organization at a minimum of $250. We look forward to seeing you at the Seventh Annual Greenberg Taste Off on Saturday, April 29th, 2017, at noon in the Woodlands Middle School/High School Gymnasium. The Annual Greenberg Taste Off is Westchester's most successful annual fundraising community event. Don't wait to pay more at the door. Get your tickets now at www.eventbrite.com. That's W-W-W-E-V-E-N-T-B-R-I-T-E dot com. You don't have to pay a service charge. Students kindergarten through 12th grade are $10, and $20 for adults. For additional information or to donate a silent auction or Penny Social item, send an email to greenburgtto@gmail.com. That's G-R-E-E-N-B-U-R-G-H-T-O at green at gmail dot com, or call 914-703-2615. Please note that we do list our donors in our Taste Off program.
Hello, good evening. Let's taste, visit, vote, win, and honor. Taste at least 30 or more items from 20 restaurants and caterers. Visit businesses to see what great services and products are available. Vote in any one or more of our competitive categories for best wings, ribs, chili, dessert, as well as the most engaging businesses. Win at the Penny Social, consisting of multiple random drawings, or our silent auction where you write down the highest bid for any item. Honor: Our school district staff members, Konstantin Adriatis, Woodlands High School teacher Sharon Carter, ECP Teaching Assistant Jackie Morrison, District Accounts Payable Rachel Pollak, Woodlands High School teacher, Linda Rodriguez, Sacred Heart School Nurse, and Elaine Zawiski, District Employee Benefits. Last but not least, support the Shirley Swartz Memorial Fund at the Lois Bronze Children's Center just by attending. 10% of our net proceeds will be donated to the center. Based on last year's floor plan, all 35 onsite participant tables are accounted for. So we have a full house already. On-site participants for the Seventh Annual Greenberg Taste Off include Acne Markets, Adal Mini Market, and... Acne Markets, Adal Mini Market and Deli, American and Spanish Food, AFC Urgent Care, Affinity Healthcare, Anthony's Cold Fire Pizza, Atamarque, Bell Suites, Century 21 Snyder Realty, Chef Alameen Caterers, Culinary Tech Center of White Plains, David Learner Associates, Darrell Pinkston Scott, Mary Kay Cosmetics, Fairview Fire Department, Fidella's Care New York, Frank's Food Court, Good for Girls Inc., Greenberg Police Department, Harlem Wizards versus Greenberg Falcons Game, Hartsdale Fire Department, Hero Sports Bar and Grill, Hurricane Grill and Wings, Jake's Wayback Burgers, and there's still more. Leroy Jones Prudential Financial Professional, McCants Mini Cheesecake, Nesto's Pizza and Deli, Party Line Tent Rental, Pick 'n Roll Soul Restaurant and Lounge, Readers of Elmsford, Rudy's Food, Sports, and Entertainment, Tasty Tuesdays at TDYCC, The Ambitious Soul, Theodore D. Young Community Center, Trader Joe's Grocery Store, Union Baptist Church, White Plains, New York. What an extensive and exciting list of participants this year. I'm here excited about Saturday, April 29th. Special thanks to GCSD Board for volunteering to man the beverage station, and I think they've been doing that for the past seven years, so thank you. And of course, the GSCD Administration for handling the voting station at the Taste Off. Thank you as well. We thank all of you here, as well as those home watching, for your time, and we hope everyone will be at the Seventh Annual Greenberg Taste Off on Saturday, April 27th at noon. Again, Saturday, April 29th, 2017 at noon. See you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rita Jones.
Good evening. I'm gonna talk fast because I have a few things I'd like to talk about. First of all, congratulations to all of the people who were in the Spelling Bee. I didn't get here for that, but congratulations to all of the students. I understand we've received a grant, and congratulations to that also for My Brothers Keeper. I think that was President Obama's grant. Well, don't count it until it's in the account because we don't know what's happening. I also want to say the Black History Month celebration was really great. I happened to be here for it, and Mr. Smith and his crew, particularly the Black History Month group, they did a fantastic job. And as you come in, you'll see the picture of Reverend Hughes has been restored in the lobby, and we were pleased to have his grandson here and giving the children a good talk on what it is. And Mr... his name slips me. Mr. Assistant Principal of the high school also talked about Peoples of the World, and it was a great history lesson, and all the children performed, and it was fantastic. The other thing I'd like to know, a community person is asking, is are you going to go ahead with consolidation of the schools, and will you include community members to help plan and design in the design stages? I have some other questions here. The Saturday Academy, could you explain that and how it's going to work? The other one is the Foundation Aid. On page nine, you have a paragraph there, "This proposal, it doesn't make sense" because there's no proposal there. Also, the other thing is, explain the advantages of merging the middle school with the high school for the beds code. What is the advantage to the school district? And the other part of this, I'd like, I think I talked to Mr. Warner and the Superintendent about this. When the board decides to make a policy that impacts any community group, I'd like them to face-to-face talk to the group. These are volunteers in the district, or else send them a letter explaining what you're doing before you do it. Not just do something and then it's as if we don't exist. I'd like that to be corrected in the future. Thank you, and would you please answer my questions? The first one is My Brothers Keeper. How will that be implemented in the district?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We did receive, and actually that was part of my Superintendent's report, I am very proud that the Greenberg Central School District was awarded during the second wave of distribution, $141,000 to implement President Obama's initiative of My Brothers Keeper. My Brothers Keeper has six tenants that empowers young men of color in helping them with their future and making healthy, wise choices. We've already started the work. Many of you may have seen a press release where the school district, as well as the Theodore Young Center convened together with 10 other school districts, and we actually accepted the My Brothers Keeper challenge, and I believe it was featured on News 12, Mr. Smith, am I correct? Was it News 12? Okay, so that was about maybe, maybe six weeks ago perhaps. So we've accepted the challenge, and we look forward to working with our young men here in this school district and helping them to make healthy, wise choices toward their future. Just so that you know, although 10 districts accepted the challenge with the Theodore Young Center, at that time, we had no money. I believe there was a quote that we all echoed, is that we're gonna do the work and the money will come. But weeks later, we found out that we were recipients of this particular grant. And of those school districts present, I think we were the only ones in Westchester. I believe in Westchester was Yonkers, Mount Vernon, and that's it? Yes, in terms of the recipients. And I'm very proud that we are a smaller school district. Our distribution was pretty comparable to that of the larger districts, and so Mr. Smith and Commissioner Early will be working very, very closely to identify mentors for our young men, give our young men exposure to career choices and different types of exposures in order to make healthy decisions. And you will learn and hear more about our action plan in the coming days. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Smith, I hate putting you on the spot, but I believe there is a My Brothers Keeper Summit next week with the Theodore Young Center, and I believe it's the Elmsford School District and Picantico Hills in Valhalla will meet together, but I believe we are leading some of the presentations, our school district. So the work has started, and I'm really excited about what this will look like. So you'll read more about it in terms of what we're doing. The other question you asked about the Saturday Academy. Saturday Academy was initiated a couple of weeks ago, and that's an opportunity for our students to work with their teachers in a more targeted fashion, where we will identify students' needs and address those needs. Three hours on a Saturday, hour and a half for math, hour and a half for reading instruction, and the kids have been coming pretty consistently, and this is offered to students from grades three through eight. And although we started a little bit late this year, we look forward to next year, provided that we do have a successful budget, to implement our Saturday Academy as early as the fall, so that would give our students a much greater edge in attaining the standards. You asked a question about the merging of the middle school and the high school. I think we've seen quite a few pockets of success by having the merger, by having one principal, one philosophy, one mission. Since this merger, I have to tell you, the middle school, high school is just such a, and it always has been a wonderful place, but it's even a better place where there's one mission, where the teachers are shared among the middle school and the high school, so they're not under two different types of leadership. We've brought in fantastic programs where middle school students and high school students have an opportunity to work together. And moving forward, there are plans where high school students can possibly be mentors to middle school students, and it's, has been so far, a wonderful merger, and we look forward to tonight, to the board approving a renaming of the school to officially be Woodlands Middle High School, and not just Woodlands Middle School, Woodlands High School. One roof, one leadership, one vision, one mission.
Okay, I understood that, but I thought maybe there was money involved, no?
Not everything is money. It's also the benefit of the children, the children being able to...
No, I thought when you said something about the beds code or something.
Oh, yeah, so, oh, right. So just for state reporting purposes, it's a great question. Just for state reporting purposes, there's now one beds code, which means that you're now identified as one school with one leader. As opposed to before, Mr. Smith was responsible for two schools, with two bed codes, and in doing that, sometimes things can get a little lost in the loop. So we're to ensure that we're not lost and we're identified as one school. It does not impact state aid, it does not impact our state allocations. It just identifies us as one building, under one name.
And then you had a question about the Foundation Aid item, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's page eight and nine. You see the paragraph where it says, "Whereas such a proposal may permanent the underfunding." What is the proposal?
Oh, you're looking at something other than what I thought you were looking at, just a minute.
It's page nine.
Page nine, I've got Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, school calendar, I've got...
Yes, so do I.
Snow District approves and ratifies the terms and conditions set forth in the side letter agreement.
No, have you got the right one?
Perhaps...
This is regardless?
Page 10.
Well, it's nine on...
Foundation Aid, whereas the Foundation Aid was established in 2007 in order to help provide a sound basic education to all students, that one?
That's fine, but you move down to, you have a different, mine is page nine, okay? But you say yours is page 10, but I think you moved down to like the fourth, the fifth paragraph where it said, "Whereas such a proposal..."
Would make permanent the underfunding of Foundation Aid that impacts hundreds of districts statewide?
Yeah, what is the proposal?
Okay, I'll give you a little background. So basically, back in, I think it was 2006, 2007, there was a case stating that we were entitled to a certain level statewide of aid based upon a Foundation Aid formula, and then there were negotiations just before the bottom dropped out of the economy, stating, "We at the state will give you this amount of aid statewide, divvied up by the state aid formula." Then there wasn't enough money to fund the state, to fund what they had promised, and we went through years and years of them removing aid from us at a certain percentage. And many school districts, even to this day, are not fully funded under the Foundation Aid formula. There are clauses in the aid formula that allow you to only increase your aid by a certain amount each year, and so they're still owed money, not our district. Well, we have other issues with our own state aid, and we'll talk about that another time, but this is in terms of statewide. The governor has come back and said, "Well, gosh, you know, that's kind of old hat. Why don't we just throw away the Foundation Aid and start over?" Which has the net effect of sort of canceling the debt, so the people who are working their way up to being fully funded, and the legislature's working to make sure that districts are fully funded, suddenly, that doesn't count anymore. And so there are a number of districts all across the state who would not be in as good a financial position if this were to all go away. And this is probably, and so we've kind of taken a position, the Westchester Putnam School Board Association, NISP, the, basically, school districts all across the state of New York have come back and said, "No, this is the wrong way to go. You can't pretend you don't owe the money. Don't abolish the old state aid formula. You may want to reform it in certain fashions. There are things that need to be updated, but don't abolish it." Okay? That's what this is about. This same resolution is being passed in school districts throughout the state, and we're kind of joining the chorus, depending on what everybody votes for. And that's what it's about, and that's where the proposal comes from.
Thank you. The last question was about, where are you with consolidation of the schools, and will you include community members to help in the planning and design stages?
Yes, we will, if we get to that point. It's about, yes, it's about funding, and of course, you know that the legislation that we tried to pass before, as a result of the townwide reevaluation, it's moot because everybody's at 100%. So changing the equalization rate no longer has any effect. So now we have to go back to the drawing board, and we're looking for short-term building aid increase that might last a couple of years, allow us to pass a bond, and make either much-needed repairs, or do some expansion or consolidation, depending on what we're able to get. Okay? We're working on it. I've been, Tom Avadanti's office is supposed to get back to me within the next two weeks to see how they're doing in terms of drafting that legislation, and that's where we're at. Thank you, Rita. Our next speaker is Cora Carey.
Good evening. Sorry about that. I have three things I want to discuss with you tonight. One being the security of this high school. Knowing that there are not enough monitors here, which is no fault of our principal. It appears that in the community, there is a lot of noise about not enough money in the budget for monitors. That scares me because whenever our young people get rambunctious, and the spring is coming, and just like the rams up in the hills, they start wanting to run around and snort and jump up and down, and it could cause some problems in the school, such as fights and other things. And I think it would be much more proper for the school district to look into monies that will fund the security of this high school and middle school, so that there are enough monitors there for the rest of the year to make sure that our kids are safe, especially those who don't want to be involved in any kinds of rough fisticuffs or rough stuff. So please consider looking into your budget again and seeing if you can come up with money enough to fund the program for the monitors, so that we will have enough in our school district to make sure, once again, our kids are protected. The second thing is my big thing, special ed. I cannot fathom why the school district does not have enough substitutes. When a one-on-one aid is not available, there is someone to take that person's place so that a child will not have to go home. As most of you know, my great-grandson is autistic, and we don't know if he's a runner. And if he is not with a one-on-one person, he may bolt out of here. That would not be good for this district, not at all. And any other child who has a special need that has a problem. So I would suggest that you work very hard with your special ed department to get substitutes for your special ed classes, especially one-on-one aids for those kids that need them. And the third thing that I would like to discuss with you is the gym. Now, $700,000 was approved by the taxpayers for some sorts of renovations in this district, for the various schools, or just maybe for this school. And it has not been done yet, the renovations in the gym that I had asked, maybe you looked into several months ago. Now, you have special ed kids working, I mean, not working, but playing, and having games, actual games, in that gym. You need to fix it. Who is in charge of the $700,000 that the taxpayers said you could use to renovate our buildings? Who is in charge? Who's holding that money? What has been done with the monies? I'm sure Mary is chomping at the bits to tell me. But I want to know, and I want to know where money is to fix that gym. I'm coming to his basketball game in a couple of days, and I want to make sure he doesn't fall and hit his head like that other student did, and was not very happy that her child was hurt in the gym. So please, please, get some money out of that budget, shake a tail feather, please, and put together the security and the needs that are desperately needed in this school, in this high school and middle school. Because I don't want to see any child, especially a special ed child, get hurt, and especially my great-grandson, because you'll have hell to pay, and I'm gonna tell you that right now. So please, once again, and oh, just one thing. I have something to say to you personally, but I will not say it tonight, because I don't think I have enough time. But I want to apologize to you, Dr. DeHira, for someone walking up to me at a luncheon and a cute... and accusing me of hindering your extension, you know, the extension of your contract? When it was first brought up, evidently, I must have, somebody must have got something wrong about what I said to you, and I just want to apologize. But I will bring it up, because I will not be attacked by parents telling me that I've done something to you that I didn't do. But right now, I'm going to leave it alone, and I'll come back another day, maybe next month, when it's warm out, and I'll tell you all about it.
Okay, did we have a response as to this $700,000? Go ahead.
So I just want to address the safety piece, because I appreciate your comments and thank you for bringing that to our attention. But I also want to assure our community and be very clear that our schools are safe. And I know that you didn't say they were not, but I want people to know that our schools are safe, so that no one misinterprets your comments. We have 13 monitors in our school, and we have under 800 children. That ratio is probably a little bit different from other school districts that have maybe even more students, but less monitors. If we can begin to take a look at how our monitors are deployed, and it might be a matter of redeploying them, but we have less than 800, and you have 13 monitors, and we really are a safe school district, and I'm proud of that, and it's important. I know that. Correct, and so I appreciate those comments. One of the things, too, that we were able to do, and I think we were able to buy a cart, am I correct, Mr. Smith? So that we could drive around the campus, and that's something that we've added to ensure additional safety, because we know that we are an open campus, and so we wanted to ensure that our kids do remain safe in our schools. With reference to the $700,000, we again thank the community for approving the repair reserve. Mary's going to give you an update as to where we are with the repair reserve and why it has taken so long.
Oh, yes, the special ed, yep. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, and you are absolutely right. We have a shortage of subs, not just with our special needs, not with our one-to-ones, not just with our TAs, but in every category. Ms. Carey, I have a very limited number of people on my one-to-one list. That is not an excuse, but it is a reason. I'll be the first to tell you that. We will never take from another child who has a one-to-one aid to provide another child with one. That's just something, it's like Robin Peter to Pay Paul. We don't believe in doing that, because if a child has it on his IEP, we don't want to violate another child's IEP. I reached out to Mary Nangle, who is the Secretary of Student Services, and what she indicated to me was that we actually put out yet another posting for substitute one-to-one aids. We have three people to respond, and whenever we call them for substitute work, they tell us no, because they prefer to be full-time. So we do have an issue. We're going to continue to cast a wider net. We've been posting for openings that we have currently in our school district, and we're not just using OLOS, because we realize that, you know, you get a limited number of people. We have been using the New York Times, which is an expensive model, but it's a way to advertise, it's what a lot of the affluent school districts are doing. We are trying our best to get more substitute teachers in our school district, but it's unfortunate that when we call people on the list, they will tell us no, that their preference is to be a full-time and not just come as a substitute. Or they'll just tell us no, if it's a high school assignment, they would prefer to work at an elementary assignment. Mary, do you know for the substitute one-to-one?
I'm not on the cover, but I'd hate to give you the wrong...
I will, I'll get back to you on that one.
Maybe that's one of the problems.
Because we did increase for the substitute teachers. Our list grew, and you're absolutely right. That's something to look into, thank you. Can you just also explain to the community where we are with the $700,000 repair reserve, please?
Absolutely. I actually checked the State Education Department website this morning, and unfortunately, we're where we were a month ago. All the plans and specs have been submitted to state ed, and now it's up to the state to say yes or no. They reviewed the plans and specs, they had several questions, in which our architect is currently working with the state on resolving the questions. As soon as the state is happy and we fix the questions that they've asked, we'll receive approval, and then we can move forward with the repair reserve. Unfortunately, we can't do anything until we have state ed approval. Do you have an outline of what you want to have in the form? Absolutely, that's what's submitted to state ed. Okay, is it possible for someone to get that?
We can, I'll melt it.
Okay, that would be great. We appreciate it. Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, I believe that concludes the public input session for this evening. The next item on our agenda is policy presentations. There is a collection of policies in a packet on the back table, and they're also posted. We have several policy amendments to be considered for board adoption at the April 25, 2017 meeting concerning board meetings, budget planning and development, procurement of goods and services, school safety plans, emergency drills, conference, travel expense reimbursement, registration and professional development requirement, Family and Medical Leave Act, and child abuse and maltreatment. Copies of these policies are available here tonight and in the district clerk's office. They're also available in all the school buildings and on our website. All comments concerning these policies should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education. Next up, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Chase.
Hey, good evening, once again. When I presented the spelling bee participants and talked about the spelling bee judges this evening, I realized that I inadvertently omitted one of the judges, and that is the Honorable Arlene Gordon Oliver, who served as one of our judges. Her name was omitted, because she could not be a judge at the very beginning. And then the day of the spelling bee, she said to me, "Dr. Chase, I'm coming to the spelling bee to be a judge. I know my name isn't on the list." So I read from the list, and so Judge Oliver, if you are looking, I apologize. But she was definitely one of our judges and so happy to be a part of us. In fact, she's been a judge since the beginning of the spelling bee. And so again, we thank her. I want to share with the community that our next budget meeting is March 28 at 6 o'clock at Highview Elementary School. I want to thank the community, I want to thank our staff, our faculty, our board members for being open-minded, which is one of our virtues of ID. We tried something different this year, where we've actually presented electronically to see if we could reach a wider audience, and I have to say, it's been successful. We've reached well over 100 people each budget presentation, and not that one person is watching it 100 times, because it has to be different individuals. So you can watch it 100 times, and you'll still count as one on your device. And so we've had well over 100 viewers for each time. I have to share with you, when we have the face-to-face meeting, typically, we don't get 100 for all meetings combined in one year. So we thought we probably reached a wider group of people, a wider range, if you will, of people by having the budget presentation done electronically. But for this third draft, we're going to actually have a face-to-face meeting. So again, it is March 28 at 6 o'clock at Highview Elementary School, so we hope to see you there. On April 20th, April 20th, we will have our dress rehearsal for the school musical, Seussical. In a day or two, you will see a beautiful trailer that was done by our technology department, advertising this wonderful musical, being done by our students under the leadership of Ms. Heather Rocker. We look forward to some awesome things from our kids this year, as we've had in the past. So we're really excited about that. Opening night, which is my favorite part of it, which is the superintendent's opening night, is going to be April 21, red carpet style, as we did before, at 7 o'clock. And if you can't catch the opening show, the 22nd of April, which is a Sunday, will be the final performance at 5:00 p.m. here at Woodlands Middle High School. Middle school, high school, and I was told that some Bailey Elementary School students will perform. So again, that's Seussical. I'm really excited about our MBK, My Brother's Keeper, grant, and thank you, Ms. Jones, for recognizing that. We are very excited to have the funding to work with our boys in empowering them to become young men who will be successful citizens through this grant. And so we thank President Barack Obama for having this vision to empower our boys, and we will make sure that we will live up to the vision with this grant. So we're really, really excited about this. On May 31, Greenberg Central School District will take the field at Citi Field Stadium. We're really excited to have an opportunity to have Greenberg Central School District Day at a professional baseball game. I've already received emails from parents, when do the tickets go on sale? Well, funny, you should ask. If you go onto our app, should be on Facebook now, and our website, you will see a link to Eventbrite, so that you can purchase tickets. I have a feeling the tickets are going to run out fast, and here's why. I've already had the Fairview Fire Department Reserve 25. I had Hartsdale Reserve 15. The Theodore Young Center just asked me for 40 tickets. I do know that we have quite a few organizations that would like to participate, because number one, you get to see our kids perform. Our kids will have an opportunity to perform for two hours before the actual baseball game. We'll get to showcase our Bailey Jazz Band, our middle school, high school jazz band, our chorus, our fantastic talented students. And as people and fans are coming into Citi Field, they will hear our students. Greenberg is a tiny little dot on a map. During the fourth inning of the baseball game, there will be an announcement stating that it's Greenberg Central School District Day, and we'll have our own section at Citi Field Stadium just for Greenberg Central School District. Before the game, which starts at 7:10 p.m., we'll have an opportunity to stand on the warning track line. I'm learning all this terminology. It's not funny. It's called the warning track line, right? I sound official, right? Oh, oops, warning track. You know what I meant. To stand on the warning track. It's that area, Ms. Carey, that's on the field, okay? I know, you know that, I know. Okay? Well, we're going to stand on the warning track, and that's sort of like a little VIP opportunity for us during the National Anthem and during the first pitch. And I'm going to throw out the first pitch, Ms. Carey. All right now. I've been working on my arm. It's not funny.
Let's go mess.
Let's go mess. It's going to be an awesome day, where our school district will be recognized. I want to thank, I want to thank Kay Jackson, and I want to thank Tracy Mears, PTA Council President, for partnering with us and making this a beautiful event, because not only this is going to be a great day to celebrate the district, where it's a community event, but it's also going to be a fundraiser. A portion of the proceeds will go to the Woodlands High School Scholarship Foundation to provide scholarships for our scholarship fund. So that our students will be afforded an opportunity to have a great start for their college experiences. So this is a win-win for our school district, and this national notoriety, this national publicity for our school district, I think will be amazing. So please support, please purchase the tickets on Eventbrite. You will be able to pick up the tickets at a later date. Again, we have an entire section in the outfield just for us. Buses will be provided, if you would like to take the bus. You do know to go across the Whitestone Bridge is about $14 to and from. Parking's about 28, the bus will be $15, and we'll leave from here from Woodlands High School. Sergio Alfonso, the fabulous Sergio Alfonso, our Director of Transportation, was able to secure 10 buses for us. So it is on a first-come, first-served basis. The tickets are $25. So for this experience, for $25, I think it's absolutely amazing, especially when proceeds will go toward our students. We have 1,200 tickets. I've already sold, how many? Do the math. How many? And I mean, I just think they're just going to sell out. Our children are going to perform, we want our community to come out. I spoke to the town of Greenberg, they want to get a group of tickets. So I'm hoping that Greenberg Central School District will represent well and show love and support to our students who will be performing at Citi Field.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you hear that? Take 15 away, Ms. Jackson. We just got 15.
I got it.
Okay. So I want to thank again the PTA Council for partnering with us, so that we can make this a true fundraising experience, and it will benefit our children greatly. And again, Ms. Jackson, for your magical skills in developing the Eventbrite, and just for your time and your dedication. So thank you all. Again, that date is May 31. Look for more commercials, look for more advertisement, but we hope to see you there. Bring the kids. It's going, it promises to be a fun-filled family day. Rain or shine. That would be it for me.
The next item.
How will the children be notified? This is maybe one of the...
Oh, there's going to be advertisement all over, so they will be notified. The kids, most of the kids already know, so there will be advertisement. I just want some help with just getting the word out into the community. And so I already have 15 tickets for the Housing Authority, I'm sure the word's going to continue to get out. Ms. Jones, when you met with me the other day, you promised me that the Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund Committee? I didn't say free. Don't you try to strong-arm me on camera. But we're looking forward to your group participating, that was good. We're looking forward to your group participating as well, so please let me know if you want me to reserve those tickets, because we won't put them, they're already selling. Okay, so Laser told me, let me just share with you this. The Eventbrite just went live, literally, an hour ago, and the tickets are already selling.
We just got...
Okay, but they're already selling. I have parents who have emailed me, Mrs. Washington's parents are already emailing, when do the tickets go on sale? So please get the tickets, I have a feeling that we might end up selling out. I actually called our friend at the New York Mets to find out if more tickets can be provided, if we should need them, and he said possibly, but the sooner he knows, the better. To have 1,200 fans from the Greenberg Central School District stand together and celebrate our kids and just have a great time, I think will be a great experience for our community. So please come out and join us for Greenberg Central School District Day at Citi Field.
Are the buses that you mentioned, will we be getting to the time of the band performing, or is it the time of the game?
Great question. So the buses are set to leave at 4, which means you'll probably miss some of it. However, the kids who are performing will leave early enough so they can set up by 5 o'clock, because the kids could take a separate bus. So we have like the band kids, they'll have their instruments, they'll be on a separate bus.
All right, thank you, Dr. Chase.
I'll be happy to answer any other questions you all may have.
Next item on our agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report.
Good evening. As Dr. Chase mentioned, our next budget meeting is March 28. I will have draft three of the budget sent home in Friday's packet for the board, and we will have it posted on the website prior to the meeting, so no later than Monday. On the district website. Oh, I don't have one of those things, you know. You don't have a computer? Would you like us to mail you one? Yes, I'd appreciate it, thank you. Okay, we can mail you one. That's one of my stresses, that's been confused. Okay, so we will mail you one of the budgets, a mail draft three. As I mentioned before, unfortunately, there really are no updates yet on the repair reserve fund, so we're still waiting for state ed. We do have a brief update on the fire alarm at the high school. Currently, the vendor's in the process of verifying and testing the systems. They are adjusting the sounding devices. They actually are scheduled to come in this weekend to do a system-wide sound test. Let's see. We'll be adding two additional speakers at an accessible level to resolve an issue of thing, I apologize. They're still setting up some control modules for fan shutdowns and need to adjust the gym sounders, but the snow presented an issue in getting the lift in the gym. They're scheduled to put the system online by the first week of April, and then they'll start removing the old system. So we are moving along fairly quickly with the PA system. And finally, we have our auditor, Star Angelo, on site tomorrow to begin the technology portion of our annual risk assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the set of board committee reports. Do I, do we have any committee reports?
A health and wellness meeting was held yesterday at Woodlands High School. The committee reviewed the wellness policy and the school food service program policy. Recommended changes will be forwarded to the board for their consideration. The committee also discussed possible health and wellness initiative. Discussed include a field day, a walkathon, and a cooking show similar to the... Discussed included a field day, a walkathon, and a cooking show similar to the series Chot. The audit committee met yesterday also as well. The audit committee policy was reviewed, and recommended changes will be held, forwarded to the board for their consideration. The committee was providing an update of the consultant work with extra classroom activities. We expect to receive the full report and guidance in the upcoming week. The audit committee discussed the internal control audit responses. We received a total of seven responses. The business office will schedule an interview on Monday, March 7. And I should say that I just want to thank Mary. I was absent from both of these meetings yesterday due to illness, but Mary stepped in and did a fantastic job. So I just want to thank you, Mary, ended my report.
Thank you, Lloyd. Other reports? All right, I have one. The Community Engagement Committee. The Community Engagement Committee met at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, March 13 in the Lee F. Jackson Cafeteria. Topics discussed included, one, the state aid formula statewide and for our district. State aid and possible changes to the state aid formula are being negotiated as part of the New York State budget due to be adopted April 1st, and I think that dovetails back to what we were talking about earlier. Tom Avananti's office is attempting to draft a new bill for GCSD with a temporary increase in building. Stay tuned. Two, Woodlands Individualized Senior Experience. Wise co-founder Vic Leviatin spoke on this program, which started at Woodlands and now provides high school seniors within over 60 high schools nationwide with the opportunity to choose their own research topic or internship, work with their own mentor, keep a journal, and provide a culminating presentation in the spring semester of their senior year. For, for more information, see www.wiiservices.org. Three, academic goals, including the strategic plan, five-year goals, the Board of Education one-year goal, the Education Committee academic goals, and unit-by-unit curriculum goals in Rubicon Atlas, which are now available on the district website. Four, GCSD budget. I believe we've heard a little bit about that. Five, the board election process. And six, a list of upcoming GCSD events, which I believe we've gone through. Seven, a Black, the Black History Month celebration, which included Michael Armstrong, Executive VP of BET, Richard Thomas, Mayor of Mount Vernon, an African-American trivia competition, and a district-wide celebration event. Eight, community questions, suggestions, requests, and praise on the following topics. Better publicizing Woodlands orientation events, improving advanced math offerings in middle school grades and restoring eighth-grade algebra, increasing the frequency of what I need or win periods, exploring adding college-level math seminars for Woodlands students, improving access to curriculum topics and extracurricular offerings and information on our district website, reducing reliance on administration to maintain student discipline through positive reinforcement, the good side of the rigor of common core goals, character education on persistence and dealing with rejection, provisions of the new GTF contract, building aid, and Wise student final presentations. The superintendent will provide written responses to questions on these topics by the end of the week, which will be forwarded to all CEC members. The next meeting of the CEC is Monday, April 3 at 7:00 p.m. at Highview. All are welcome.
David, I have, I have a committee report.
Go ahead, Antonette.
Communications Committee, we met on February 15, 2017. In regard to the website, Rocco was going to follow up on adding curriculum maps to the website with Dr. Chase and Dr. Valenti. PTA need dates, need to set dates for the technology team to assist the PTA with building websites. Dr. Chase, Rocco, and his team will initiate individual PTA website development. In regards to branding, the GCSD logo needed to be updated with the correct date. Miguel is working on that change for printing purposes. The Falcon watermark will be postponed until next school year. We discuss the mascot currently at Lee F. Jackson. We briefly discussed some ideas and reviewed some costumes for both the mascot at the middle school, high school, and also at the lower elementary schools as well. PTA requested, when was the best time to order materials in regards to t-shirts and other items? We will get back with them in time for ordering for the 2017-18 school year. The district video is still under development. Right now, it is being edited. The meeting adjourned at 8:30. Our next meeting is March 22, which is tomorrow at 6:30 at the mansion. Thank you.
Are there any more committee reports? Okay. Next item on our agenda, approvals. Do I hear a motion to approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Board action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finance items. Do I hear a motion to approve the finance items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Business items. Do I hear a motion to approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student services items. Do I hear a motion to approve the student services items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? New business. I should make an announcement that next month's regular meeting has been rescheduled from April 18 to April 25 in order to coincide with the Southern Westchester Bosse's Vote Day. Do we have any new business? Terry.
David, it's not really new business, just want to expand upon something that was mentioned earlier today. It was an inquiry about the, the building plan. Dr. Chase did not mention that we do have it on the website. I know Cora, you don't go on the website, but Dr. Chase, in her, in her transparency, has posted that on the website. So I just want to, for anybody who is looking, watching at home, I don't want you to leave with the impression that it's not available. It is available on the website.
Other new business? Dwight? Yes.
Mr. Warner. Not necessarily new business, but just a reminder that we are still seeking applicants, recommendations for our Nettie Jackson Extra Model Award. Again, there are so many people out in the Greenberg community, faculty, staff, people who do so much for our students here at Greenberg, and if you know someone, write up that recommendation, let us know so we can honor them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? We're adjourned.